panelists have joined us. First of all, I want to thank everyone for joining us in this very exciting session. I just want to make a couple of disclaimers before we get started on the actual content of the panel. First of all, this session is being translated into Arabic, so you can find the Arabic translation on your Zoom panel. And the second announcement is that the session is recorded and will be broadcasted live on the Economic Research Forum YouTube channel. So just in case you missed any parts of it, you'll be able to catch it on the ERF's YouTube channel. I would like to welcome you all to this very exciting session on growing up in the digital world, hosted by the Economic Research Forum in partnership with the Center for International Governance Innovation. My name is Dr. Vivian Badaan. I am a social, political and cultural psychologist and the professor at the American University in Beirut. I'm interested in research on social cohesion, collective action, gender equality, and advancing culturally sensitive development paradigms. I'm particularly interested in big data research and how we can leverage technological advances for the welfare of society, which I think is very on point for the content of this panel. I will be the chairperson and the moderator of this session today. So first, please allow me to introduce our esteemed panel of speakers, starting with our keynote speaker, Dr. Rohinton Medora. Dr. Rohinton is president of the Center for International Governance Innovation, joining the center in 2012. He served as the center's former international board of governors from 2009 to 2014. Previously, he was vice president of programs at Canada's International Development Research Center. Dr. Medora received his doctorate in economics in 1988 from the University of Toronto. His fields of expertise are monetary and trade policy, international economic relations, and development economics. He has published extensively on those issues in professional and non-technical journals and produced several books such as Finance and Competitiveness in Developing Countries, as well as Financial Reform in Developing Countries. Now I'll move on to introducing our discussants. First, we have Dr. David Bishai. Dr. Bishai is a physician and leading health economist with expertise in the economic evaluation of public health programs. His latest book, Achieving Health for All, won the Shermanov Prize for contributions to the field of primary healthcare. He has an impressive 260 peer-reviewed publications in health economics. Dr. Bishai received his PhD in healthcare systems from the Wharton School of Business in 1996. In 1987, he also received his MD from the University of California at San Diego and his MPH from UCLA. His residency training in internal medicine and pediatrics was completed at the Cedars-Sinai Medical Center in Los Angeles, California. He's a member of the Economic Research Forum and former president of the International Health Economics Association. And finally, our second discussant for this session is Sarah Hassanin. Sarah Hassanin is a public health expert with over 15 years of experience in health system strengthening and program management. She has served as undersecretary of Federal Ministry of Health, as well as acting Minister of Health in Sudan in 2019. Previously, she was the Global Fund Project Management Unit Head for the malaria and resilient health systems program. She was also the lead consultant for the resource mobilization and grant-making effort and coordination between many organizations, including the UNDP, the Federal Ministry of Health, and the Global Fund. She has also managed multidisciplinary programs focusing on chronic lung disease prevention and control. Sarah has also published several articles on the decentralization, access to health, and intersection between macroeconomic policies and health system outcomes. So we have an excellent lineup of speakers who are experts on the topic that we're discussing. I want to thank you all for being with us today, and I'm really excited to hear your interventions. To our participants today, I also thank you for being here. We want this session to be as interactive as possible, so we are very keen on hearing from you if you have any questions or any ideas to propose to our panelists and to all of us. As participants, you can include the questions that you have in the Q&amp;A section of this webinar, so you can just type your questions in as you go, and then I can raise those questions up to our panelists. But also, when we open up our session for the Q&amp;A discussion towards the end, you can use the raise hand function on Zoom to also ask any questions that you have for our panelists. And without any further ado, we will start and we will open the floor up with our keynote speaker, Dr. Rohinton Medora.
Great, Vivian, well, thank you for the introductions and for managing all of this so well, as I know you will do. And it's always good to be with all of you at the ERF. Pity, as always, that we're not doing this in person, but that is the nature of, in my view, vaccine inequity, which balances very nicely the things, Vivian, you were saying about your own specialty of equity, efficiency, and social norms in some ways. In my 20 minutes or so, I will be doing two things. I want to first speak to this Lancet Financial Times Commission that I was privileged to be a part of for the last three years, and then reflecting on what that means for health and more broadly, social policy. The Lancet Commission was struck in 2019. We met for the first and only time in late 2019 in Berlin to launch the commission. There was supposed to be a series of in-person meetings thereafter, which never happened, of course, because of COVID. And so this was a salutary lesson for us in doing partnership learning and impact in the digital era. Now, well before COVID struck, the idea that technology can have such real social, political, and economic impacts was obviously well-known. The commission itself is called, the full title is Governing Health Futures 2030: Growing Up in the Digital World. And so we had an orientation towards youth. There were 19 of us, co-chaired by Professor Ilona Kickbusch from Switzerland and Germany, and Dr. Anurag Agarwal from India. I think there were two or maybe three economists in the group. It was a group that was from all over the world and multidisciplinary, which made, in my humble view, for some very rich discussions and learning. And the full report, which perhaps will be shared in the chat function, was published in the Lancet in October of last year. I have a slide deck to sort of guide my presentation. So, Namis, if you could start it. Before I get to the slides itself, I guess I'd make two preliminary points. One point I'd make is that data and the digital world more broadly is characterized by features that, at least in economics, we know about, but we're not terribly comfortable analyzing. And what that means for policy and action is therefore even more complex. Specifically, data and the digital world is characterized by so-called network effects. The more people that participate, the stronger is the efficiency and impact of whatever it is that we're doing. Second externalities, both positive and negative, and this will feature a lot in my presentation. Often economies of scale, especially at the firm level. The bigger you are, the better you are. The better you are, the bigger you become. And that's especially true in the data world, where the bigger your data set, especially with machine learning and AI, the more things you can do. The more things you can do, the stronger your product. The stronger your product, the more clients you have, therefore the more data you get. And it creates a self-perpetuating circle that effectively leads to what is often called a winner-take-all kind of approach. And that leads to a series of behaviors, both at the national level and at the firm level, which are interesting and actually lead to all kinds of strategic behavior. And so the broad point I'd make for an economics community is that there is a ton of non-convexity in every decision. And so marginal decisions become that much more tricky to analyze. The second preliminary point I'd make, if I had to sort of leave you with one lesson from everything we did, is that nominally, although this is a presentation about health and the digital world, it is the least important aspect of the presentation. I think health and digital are actually substitutes for all of these other things that tend to be society norms that I think emerge. And so a sound health policy or a sound digital policy cannot be distinguished from a sound development policy or a sound liberalization policy more broadly. And so if we go to the first slide to motivate this discussion the way we do in the report, Namis? This is a simple graph, actually, that plots on the x-axis the access, if you will, to the internet. On the y-axis, it plots child mortality or infant, child and infant mortality. And even if you, you know, subscribe to the fact that correlation does not imply causality, there's something going on here that becomes intuitively obvious. The more connected you are in the digital world, the more clearly other things seem to be happening that lead to improved health outcomes. Now teasing all of that out, especially using multi-level analysis, which I think is the only way you can do this, is something that hasn't been done yet. I think there's several dozen PhD theses embedded in this chart alone, and I encourage ERF and everyone else to think about that. And so if we then go to the next slide, which you might want to overlay on this one, this one simply shows you the access to the internet or access to connectivity for young people in different developing parts of the world. And what you find is that it's not terribly high anywhere. It's about 60% in the richer parts of Eastern Europe. The MENA region, as you see, lies smack in the middle. Africa is in the low single digits, and the global average is 30%. If we then go to the next slide, which sets out the conceptual framework that we used for the commission, I'd say that if you start at the extremities, that there are four things that feed into a digital transformation. In no order of importance, there is a governance and legal system that is embedded in everything we do. Second, there is the political economy of innovation, by which I simply mean, how does innovation happen? Who manages it? To what end? To what distributional consequences? Basically, what is the IP regime at the end? Something we're seeing play out in spades with the COVID-19 vaccine. That's all what I call political economy of innovation. Then there's the social context of rights. Do we have, is there a respect for rights? Are these individual rights or are they collective rights? And what are the social norms and cultural norms through which innovation plays out in society? And then the fourth and final piece in this puzzle is the digital infrastructure, by which I mean both the hard infrastructure as well as the soft infrastructure, the digital governance, if you will, the infrastructure. And so you have to think about those four points before you move to what that means for digital transformations in health, which is the rectangle inside. And here we make a very simple point. Digital technologies play out both directly and indirectly. The direct channel is obvious. One can use digital technologies for improved research outcomes. One can use it to access distant populations. One can use it for better data and records management for patients, and on and on. And so those are all the direct impacts. And then there are the indirect impacts, which, you know, in my semi-informed view, would be at least as important as the direct impacts. And this is the impact that digital technologies have through the political system, through the social mediation processes, through the economy more broadly. And so if you at all believe in the social determinants of health and the macroeconomic determinants of health, then you can see how technologies have this kind of all-encompassing feature when it comes to health outcomes, which takes us to the next kind of conceptual slide, where we simply show how equity in health. And so our starting point in the commission was to say that we buy into universal health coverage. That if you at all believe in UHC, then what digital does is it's a key determinant and a key connector in all the different levels through which you achieve universal health coverage, be that environmental governance, and so urban and rural, so differentials, be it something more social, such as messaging and education levels, or be it something more immediate, such as your home, workplace, and environmental conditions. And so all of these feed into health equity, and all of them are made stronger or weaker by digital technologies. And so the finals of conceptual slide, the next one, simply embeds the public value of digital transformations in the larger context, which is what does this mean for the design of health systems? And then the design of health systems is embedded in our overall national development context, which includes the five or six features that you see in the bottom circle. And so, as I said, it is difficult to tease out what we mean by health policy from what we mean by sensible innovation strategy and what that means more broadly for a development strategy. And so in my next three slides, if we move to the next one, I'm going to organize my thinking, and I'm now going a bit beyond what was in the commission report, organize my thinking on what this means for national strategies, particularly in three dimensions. The first one is what I'd call the governance of new technology, that anything to do with how digital technologies impact health outcomes has to start with your overall approach to new technologies. Importantly, what kind of social norms exist around new technologies? And what kind of ethical and other standards do countries have for the creation and crucially, management and rollout of new technologies? Now elsewhere, I've made the case that just as we have a Universal Declaration of Human Rights, we should think of something similar, a sort of global statement on how technologies interact with society. We really need that if anything else is to follow. And although I know that the UDHR has its detractors, mainly people who think that it is mainly ignored rather than followed in many parts of the world, you know, my reaction would be these kinds of statements are aspirational and aspirations are a good thing, especially for marginalized groups. Second, they guide the creation of national and sub-national legislation in many countries. And third, over time, it's surprising how much, such as through the creation of the International Court, these things can also be used to create incentives to comply and disincentives to violate. And so I think societal norms and ethical standards and some kind of global compact around new technologies is, has an important aspirational as well as normative and operational aspect to it. And so the third point I'd make on the governance of new technologies is that increasingly, we're going, as decisions are taken, mediated through algorithms and big data, that we're going to have to think very seriously about the policy regimes we have for algorithmic accountability and transparency. And the analogy I often give is that if you buy the most simple aspirin anywhere in the world, it has been through a series of safety checks and packaging checks and transportation checks. And, you know, there's a Food and Drug Administration, FDA, kind of agency in almost every country. And even if in countries don't have an FDA, they will then wait for European or US approval before approving a drug. Well, when it comes to algorithms, so when it comes to many aspects of digital transformations in health, there is no equivalent. But for obvious reasons, we should have one. And so although the analog policy world doesn't directly translate into the digital world, I think there are certain concepts that are important to keep in mind. And going forward, I would say that algorithmic accountability and transparency is probably the defining one in coming decades. Next slide, I focus in from that sort of broad governance regime to data governance, where, as we point out in the commission and elsewhere, data is often useless when it is single, but becomes multiplicationally powerful when it is combined. And the bigger and bigger and the better and better the quality of your data set, the more things you can do with it. So whether you think of that as a network effect or a club good or anything else is entirely up to you. But the first step is to say then, okay, if we know that data sets matter, what do we do about them? One way forward is in relatively non-controversial areas and in regimes where data can be anonymized to create open data sets, so that you have economies of scale, and it isn't just the large firms and the large countries that can do this kind of data set-based research. Open data sets often exist at the national level. Very, very few exist at the international level. One might make the point, case that something like CERN, the particle accelerator, outside Geneva, is an example, where its members get to use a common data set. But in health, you can see why this is important, especially when you want diverse populations represented. And so a governance regime around open data sets, I think, is crucial. Second, the creation of data trusts or so-called data cooperatives, in which you might say, if you think of your retirement savings account, it's your money, but you can choose whether you invest it in fund X or Y. And you might make that analogy with your data, that it may be your personal de-health data, it may be your personal other identification data. But if data trusts emerged of varying degrees of attitude and so on, then you might choose where your data belongs, and those data trusts then compete with each other for a race to the top. And you find ways in which you can collectivize data while ensuring some degree of privacy and so on. And of course, if there are commercial benefits from the use of that data set, it could go to the shareholders, meaning the people who've contributed their data. So I think there's a fairly fair way of doing this. One would make the same point about common data pools, that is increasingly the case in S&amp;T cooperation between countries for various kinds of innovation. But the last and final point I'd make on this is that, as we saw with tracking apps in COVID, managing that nexus of issues around having the benefits of digital technologies and big data and some of the costs emerging from it is important. And so the privacy and human rights and tracking elements are something to be thought through very carefully. ANCTAD has, for example, estimated that only about 20% of the countries in the world have no privacy legislation whatsoever. And many more have it, but it has no teeth. And so creating norms around privacy and then enforcing them is yet another one of those things that we have to get serious about if we want to benefit from the considerable benefits that exist from common data. And so I end with a final slide on what this might mean for public investment. In most of these cases, one can make a case for public-private partnerships for the same reasons that one does in any other kind of analog activity. These tend to be, data sets and other digital investments tend to be infrastructural in nature. And so one can think of governments' regimes borrowed from the infrastructure world to manage them. There are some public service roles that I think require to be transformed. For example, if you have a national health system and it's sitting on a ton of data, or if you have a national statistical agency that has all the tools and expertise to gather data, we might want to begin thinking of these outfits as data trusts, as groups that are sitting on a valuable asset that can be commercialized, either privately commercialized or put to good public use to create social value. And so it requires a rethink of several agencies that currently kind of sit on data, but haven't understood its full value and have not been able to unleash it. And the finals of obvious point on what this means for public investment is digital stems, digital networks have huge implications for remote health access and delivery, especially in parts of the world that are sparsely populated. Not just sparsely populated, parts of the world where expertise is concentrated in only a few parts of the country. And so if you want access to high-level diagnostics of the kind that might only be in a capital city, then increasingly, remote health and remote diagnostics might be the way to go. So there's lots of potential, but with that potential comes lots of opportunity for good policy and some risk for bad policy and bad outcomes. So I have taken a bit more than my 20 minutes, Vivian, for which I apologize, but I am done, and I look forward to my colleagues' reactions.
Thank you for an excellent presentation. I think it was worth more than the 20 minutes allotted to it. I highly enjoyed listening to this, and I have my own questions and maybe a discussion that we can engage in once our discussants bring their ideas to the forefront as well, which is why I would like to invite Dr. David Bishai to go next with his intervention and his response to what you just proposed to the forefront.
Thank you. I just got a few comments to share, and forgive me for using slides for this. I don't know if you can see my slide now, Vivian? Thank you.
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much, Rohinton, for your provocative work in this area. I think we've all learned a lot. I wanted to bring my perspective from the world of public health and medicine. Also, bringing in a historical perspective, a lot of the work I do is related to economic demography, looking at this tremendous progress that's been made in the health of people all around the world. We look around and life expectancies are nowhere shorter than 50. Everybody, every country in the world has made tremendous growth over the last 100 years. But I'd like to point out the role of these magic bullet thinkings. When I went to grad school, the economists were all saying the reason we're all so healthy is the magic of income and growth and wealth. All we need to do is get more economic growth, and that'll automatically make countries healthy. That is totally false now, and I think we recognize that that money itself as a resource has to be used properly in order to create livable communities. And COVID-19 has illustrated this in spades. You look at the countries that did well with COVID. Being rich had nothing to do with it. In fact, many countries, the richer they were, the worse they did with COVID. Now I want to turn that type of thinking over to digital and warn everybody that it's really not digital per se that will be the engine. I understand we saw an association 20 minutes ago, but count me as a skeptic that there's a whole lot of, you know, cause and effect there. And I think Rohinton would agree with how we use it. So much of his talk had to do with, it's not going to be magical. We have to use this correctly. So just reflect on the 350-year lag between the invention of the printing press and any movement in human mortality. All of the printed documents and the improvements in literacy in the last 500 years had almost no effect on health in Europe, had no effect on health in Europe. People used the printed word for many, many things, and most of what they did with the printed word did not improve health. Health is not created by words, and words can actually be harmful. So I just want to start with a note of skepticism that there's some magic to data sets and digital. It really is a matter of how we use this magnification of our ability to reach each other with data and with speech. But going back to what we just heard in our, on our talk, governance is so important for us, and when we come to the policy sector, we want to talk about what can we provide from the policy world. And yes, common data protocols are really, is so important in leveraging the most of the network externality. And we need to work harder on finding those places where public investments will will unleash the best of what um, the digital world has and find a way to to hold back on on some of the unintended consequences. So as we heard, the network externality is sort of what economists contribute to this space. Um, more users means more value to each user. Uh, and in health, the users, you know, my way to to break the 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 world down is the healthcare provider side and the sort of the patient and healthcare beneficiary side. As a healthcare provider, what digital is opening to us is speed and access to much more data about our individual patients and our populations as well, speaking from a public health perspective. So when I'm working as a doctor, I see a patient within a minute in in best of circumstances, which are much more common now, I can see that patient's full set of lab results, their medications, their allergies, and it makes me a better doctor. This is so important and can be so effective, but it requires common data protocols. Here in my state of Maryland, we have a statewide system that has figured out common data protocols. So I have access to every patient's utilization at every single hospital in the state that's working right now and I can access it and it it is so effective, but it's only in my state. It required a focused investment by the state of Maryland in these common data protocols. It requires ongoing work. It's not free and it requires an investment. Um, and that's it's something that is spreading all around the world. The other thing that we get from digital is clinical decision support. When I'm practicing medicine in the clinic and um, I I see a patient with, you know, a a rash, I, before I discharge that patient, a number of screens offer me clinical decision support, meaning they advise me on what the rash could be. I get um, uh, artificial intelligence alerting me to things that I should be thinking about to be a better doctor. So that also requires investment. It's coming from a quality improvement side. Also has to be consistent with the the financial uh, rewards inside the health system. It has to be the case that the the clinical service I work for sees value in in helping guide clinicians on on these decisions. On the patient's side, uh, we've seen around the world for COVID um, uh, apps on the phone that will alert you about your local risk. Uh, Bluetooth detectors that will tell you you have been within six feet of a newly diagnosed COVID patient. This is just one example that's top of mind about what digital has been able to offer countries like South Korea in terms of infection control. That's just the start of it. We could also begin to alert users on their their devices about other things that of of importance. Biometrics are just part of it. Some people now are tuning into services that um, help them detect data about their own bodies, their food intake, their heart rates uh, that they can use. And they need benchmarks for that. Just knowing my heart rate today doesn't help me unless I have some guidance uh, from the health system about how to make it much more useful. So back to what can the public sector do? Um, common data protocols, these are necessary to to really help the provider side um, be of great benefit. The worry is privacy and security. The these have to be made um, aware of the patient's preferences. So here in Maryland, our system is an opt-out system. If a patient finds out or just becomes aware that clinicians know about their data, they can easily um, go and say, I don't want my data being shared around the state of Maryland. I I'm opting out. Um, if we had made it an opt-in system, we would have defeated the network externality. Um, we need new capacity in local health departments. There is this public health side that I want to emphasize. I just spoke recently about what doctors can do in treating individual patients. But what we saw with COVID nineteen was an an entity that had escaped our knowledge for a long time, which is there are local public health departments that count the COVID cases that tell us to put masks on, that track the vaccines. These entities have been vastly neglected, especially in the MENA region. These public health departments are are not ready for the task of taking use of these digital data on epidemiology. Um, they're not ready to detect the next outbreak in a in a short time. Uh, if they did have an investment in their own capability to use data, they could be ready to detect new syndromes, certainly heat-related phenomena. Um, Europe learned this uh, during their heat waves, that they had local public health that could not detect um, uh, the the pressing number of deaths and emergency room visits during their heat waves. Same is true throughout MENA, where we don't have that capability. Um, we could track syndromic surveillance using digital tools, where if we see an uh, an increase in the number of patients going to a hospital or or an emergency department with vomiting and diarrhea, we would detect a foodborne outbreak or a waterborne outbreak. We could detect the next influenza outbreak by looking at these syndromeic patterns. Digital isn't the only answer. We could build a system that detects it, but then we would also need people who knew how to use the data. Um, we could use this to track vaccine gaps and laser point our resources to where the unvaccinated populations are. I did this last year when I was working as a as a government health official. We detected the gaps and disparities in the under-vaccinated African Americans and Hispanic Americans. And we moved our clinics to where they were as a way to respond. Now, the data itself didn't do it. Right? It took a public health department that knew how to react to the data and make policies from the data. So I worry that we make this beautiful data world without the people that can use it. That requires an investment in the the public health capabilities. So finishing off, I don't think that there's an app that alone is what we need. We need apps. Um, but we need policy and humans that can use the apps. On that last note, I worry that a lot of the 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 pushing money into this space of digital is coming from philanthropists who made their money in digital and tech. And they might make a wrong call that the apps solve everything. And I worry about that a lot because I I really want my comments to be apps are great, but they're they're necessarily not sufficient. We need institutions, human institutions that use what the digital world can bring into our hands. So thanks for 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 letting me participate in this panel. Looking forward to our discussion.
Thank you so much for that insightful uh, discussion, Dr. David. I really appreciated all the points you brought to the table and took ample notes that hopefully we can bring into our discussion. But I think that um, one of the points that you mentioned, especially about the strength of public health systems in the MENA region, is an excellent entry point for our next discussant, Sarah Hassanin, who has ample experience in working within the public health domain, especially in Sudan. So Sarah, the floor is all yours to share your insightful um, work and research and ideas with us.
Um, um, hello, everyone. Um, I would like to um, thank uh, Dr. Rohinton for the insightful um, uh, presentation on this uh, urgent and important topic. And also, Dr. David, for um, pointing areas where um, the digital language should really um, appear. Um, I will uh, give some comments and um, put some points uh, for uh, discussions and to keep in our mind on um, paving our way forward in digital health or um, implementation of any digital intervention in health systems. Um, it's quite apparent that the inequity and related the infrastructure and system gaps might impact the perceived outcome. Um, uh, for example, uh, it's 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 actually apparent that if you, if we're to impose any kind of a digital uh, system in a ill-prepared, let's say, uh, health system or a health system that or a system that doesn't have needed infrastructure, we can widen the gap. Uh, sometimes we can just accumulate the um, the investments in the center and uh, as if we are um, skewing the imbalance between the center and the remote uh, areas or the rural settings. Um, and also, uh, it's important that we bear in mind that regulating the pace of the implementation or the enforcement of the digitalization um, should be in balance with ensuring that the deprived settings or the, let's say, low uh, income countries have um, the local community needs and gaps well articulated, uh, and demonstrated. And also, um, have well-controlled and have the agency to balance between the two theories of the rationale use and the technical-based theories and the market-based commodification and user demand theory, so that things are really um, mirroring the needs, so that we really have the positive outcome and the positive impact. Yeah, there should be as other operationalization and implementation hurdles, that that should be uh, a number one concept that we should bear in mind. If I were asked whether uh, where do I see the the, let's say, the implementation phase of the digital um, digitalized interventions, I would say that the first phase should be more or less directed into the health determinants or be more determinants focused. Um, for example, uh, strengthening the area of wash, um, the climatic um, related crisis, um, improving the warning systems, the timely diagnosis, because these are the area where really there always should be a layer where um, the knowledge, there is always a firsthand layer of knowledge. Um, and also it helps pooling on the overall outcome and overall development improvement. And also through this, we will avoid augmenting the curative driven skewed health systems, which is at the case in um, a lot of countries where even if we're going to direct it towards the primary healthcare level or the universal health coverage, but still, some some um, systems could be curative-driven. So if we're just going to invest the digital interventions in areas where that that also, uh, let's say widen this um, kind of um, investment in the curative uh, um, uh, element that will also weaken the holistic dimensions of health. That's why I would, I would prefer that the first phase be, let's say, health determinant um, uh, health determinant and also let's like district health information systems and and demographic system improvement in order to have real-time data. Um, unlike, uh, and I would also like to strengthen the importance of embedding of values like ethics, ownership, social justice and community partnership as important um, determinant. It's important that we avoid the alienation of the local communities so that we ensure that everything flows as as smooth as possible and we ensure that um, we're really empowering the local communities, we're really empowering the local community knowledge systems and and uh, the 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 technologies or the digital intervention interventions that we are promoting for are really appropriate technologies. Here we can come with maintainable systems and also sustainable interventions. And also this caters for the approaches of the social justice and uh, it helps in conceptualizing the the technology uh, on the implementation processes and it's going to be very sensitive. Here we can be aware of whether such is a certain um, intervention would widen the gender gap per se, if i- in a certain country, if there is um, a gender inequalities or the axis is in itself um, a bit crippled uh, towards women per se. Um, so um, just implementing uh, a digital, a digital intervention just appropriately without knowing or without being context-sensitive, this might also come up with uh, more disparities. Um, some points that we just really need to think of while uh, while stepping forward on the uh, digital system and especially after the COVID, we all knew that um, surveillance system should be as 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 strong as possible and they should be very punctual and be able to pick it and uh, give us real-time um, uh, data for real, real, really informed decision-making. Uh, there are some complexities uh, in the operations and also um, mainly the number one thing that we want the digital um, interventions or digitalizations to help on is to help us with the complexity of operations or the complexity of decision-making. But um, we really need to uh, bear in mind that sometimes we can, we can, we can just move, but we can reach a turning point where this can surpass maybe the human abilities itself. And here, this is also um, a question of governance and dominancy and also sustainability and other issues like destabilization and 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 so on. So um, also one of the points is the um, where will this digital health? How 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 can we um, let's say, preserve that also the interaction of the health system? This kind of social contracting building between the, between the patient or the community and the um, health service provision. Um, there is, there are a lot of issues like the social construct of health, the illness perception itself, the well-being perception. So how can we ensure that things are are really articulated and and harmonized without just um, hitting any of those? Um, and also the restrictions, uh, which is like what I've said, if anything that uh, uh, went out of control and so on. Um, and the 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 most important thing is just the research, the research. And also, which is, you know, social research also goes here. Um, um, operational researches and also the implementation researches. And should also think of uh, the mixed methods so that we don't um, um, abandon any of the uh, context uh, sensitive element. Um, thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah, for a wonderful intervention. I think you brought in very novel elements into this discussion, including the role and the necessary role of cultural sensitivity in conducting this kind of research and promoting and digitizing healthcare and how it's important to really ground it in research that takes care of of what the context in which we are applying these technologies in uh, is. So um, I do have personally a few questions prepared for our uh, keynote speaker and our discussants, but I would like to see if any of our audience members um, have any questions, any of our attendees have any questions for us before I get started with um, the discussion questions that I have prepared. So please, if anyone has uh, questions, ideas, an intervention to put to the forefront, feel free to raise your hand. Uh, and we can take your question. Uh, go ahead, Brian.
Yes, I'm actually uh, speaking as a, as a complete uh, you know, uh, by standard, so to speak. Uh, this is something that, I mean, the this set of topics are uh, way above my head, but I'm quite intrigued and uh, particularly the, you know, the yourself, the moderator, Dr. Vivian, and as well as uh, the two uh, uh, you know, the two commentators. Uh, it seems to me like this discussion really entails multidisciplinarity, especially on the side of the, those uh, in the medical profession. Uh, you know, and it's quite intriguing that uh, actually it's very clear that you this, you you, it's very clear that you display considerable awareness about the multidisciplinarity of this issue, especially on the social uh, science side of it. Uh, so my question is the extent to which actually the medical profession uh, is expanding, uh, it is reach uh, to actually uh, train and 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 kind of practice uh, those actually involved in the medical profession to appreciate uh, the these kind of issues. Because uh, and I'm sure Dr. Sarah would uh, could, would attest to this, that in Sudan, for example, the medical doctors uh, like any other professionals, but especially the medical doctors, don't seem to reflect any interest on any other thing other than what they do. And they see themselves as uh, you know, very special people, very special professionals. And uh, and 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 this is a, this is very problematic because actually, uh, the kind of, you know, kind of skill, kind of mix and the uh, expertise that's needed to tackle these complex issues require multidisciplinarity and uh, an intersectal type of thinking. So I just wanted to pose this question, uh, to see the extent to which you are really moving in this direction or the speakers are kind of a special cohort. the speakers are kind of a special cohort of medical professionals who just, we are very privileged to have them actually. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Does any of our speaker, would any of our speakers like to provide an answer?
This is David. I would just welcome that reflection and point that the way forward to, to try to create coherent movement of the medical profession. I think comes from public health in around every single professional. There is a district health officer or provincial health officer that is the steward of the local data and is supposed to be in communication with the medical profession. They are supposed to be communicating about the local epidemiology. We see this with COVID. How to, to, to get coherence in how we act so that the, the, there is a profession that is charged with this role. And you're right, the medical professional may or may not need data. Fundamentally, seeing somebody who is sick and trying to help them. You don't, you never not need a data, you know, 50 years ago, you could just do it with paper. But these days, the practice of public health really is a data driven science. But the fundamentals of how to get reform. So if, if you want the medical providers to be more conscious of their communications and of their local communities empowerment. That's going to come from public health. And this is where Mina really needs to move forward. The number of schools of public health with modern curricula is low, an under invested area. And I know E R F has been thinking of all these lines of strategic investments in this profession. And I would really bring that back onto the agenda.
If you might, if I may also add on this, I can see that the, for the health technology, when it comes for the health technology, I think it's the, the medical doctors are really buying into that in terms of, you know, telemedicine and so on. But also bringing up the point that if the infrastructure wasn't paved well. Any hurdles, when they see any hurdles in this interaction between them, let's say, and the patient, this might build reluctance. So that's why, that's where the operationalization should be as flawless as, as possible through the research and the know how and the contextualization. And yes, the public health system is, is, is that driven and like what I've said, the COVID, I think, made it clear for every, every at every unit and every person that real time data is really needed and it's also, it also built this kind of where the community is looking for the numbers, for the graphs, for the real data to come. And they were also criticizing any delays in the readings of the numbers and the, and the figures. Which is also, you know, this, this also advocated for the, for the need of the digitalization. But still, when it comes to the public health, even the, even the medical doctors who are into the public health, who are in the primary healthcare are different. And especially in, 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 in countries like Sudan per se. There are different strata from the other. Let's say, medical practitioners who are in other sectors. So yeah, that, that, that brings again the importance of the contextualization and we needed it to be very sensitive and aware of, of all the, all of our, our elements there. Yeah, and there is a, a lot of areas where, for example, the, the linking. There is a gap in the linking of the civil registration, the health information system, the district information system. These are the logistic management information system. And sometimes if we did not look at the through a wider aspect, we can come up with investing in an area. And when, when we want to link it or let the two different, let's say, the supply chain to speak to the to the, to the morbidity data. For example, we can invest in the morbidity data alone and then we figure out that this kind of digital investment cannot just speak to the, to the, to the logistic part. So yeah, that's, that's, all these are really lessons that we should bear in mind before, yeah. And, and linking it to the research to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I would like to see if anyone would like to follow up on that or if any of our attendees have other questions for our speakers today? You can raise your hand or even type any questions that you have into the Q and A. But if we don't have anything immediate, I think I would like to follow up on, on what Sada just said and what she echoed in her presentation, which I think is a very important entry point for me as a social scientist. And as someone who is concerned with, you know, centering social justice at the heart of any kind of development practices that we engage in. So we already know that large disparities exist in access to healthcare across countries and contexts. But also even within the same country, based on things like socioeconomic status and ethnicity and gender. And as we also heard in Dr. Midora's intervention, large disparities also exist in access to the internet. So we have these disparities in healthcare and disparities in access to the internet. So how likely is it that this shift to digital healthcare will just exacerbate or widen these existing inequalities in healthcare? But also based on your expertise as the practitioners in the field. What do you think are some strategies that we can use to improve accessibility to digital healthcare? So both to the digital aspect and to the health, healthcare aspect. So that moving forward with this digital transformation, we ensure that we're not widening the divide, we're not widening this accessibility gap.
Can I? Can I start? And, and, and we can, and I'll keep my camera on and we can maybe have a panel. No, look, I, I think this is, all the points have been really, really good ones, but, but your final questions of goes to the heart of the issue. And again, I'd, I'd, my, my cop out would be to say that this is not unique to digital technology. And it's not unique to the health world. As David Ostrupki pointed out in the lag between the invention of the printing press and higher and higher forms of literacy and empowerment. Huge, huge differences. I, I think I would balance though the risk of the digital divide, which is for real, you know, only two thirds of the world has any meaningful access to the internet. With also the potential for leapfrogging using digital technologies and, and it, I use the analogy of banking. Where because many countries did not have very good traditional banking systems. They could move to digital form of payments and e-banking much more quickly than some of the legacy countries could. And so I would make a plea that while we should be concerned about digital divides. The opportunity for countries to use, for example, in my country in Canada. It is one of the laggards when it comes to using digital technologies. Why? Number one, we have a very entrenched medical profession. Second, we are a federation and so a lot of the health work gets implemented at the provincial level. And so you're really dealing with 10 plus two authorities to get anything done. And so if you can leapfrog some of that, the way digital would allow you to, then that would be helpful. Just one quick word on something David said on opt in, opt out. I, I, I agree that this is a dilemma. When you create systems which are voluntarily opting in. What you find is that free writing becomes the problem. And so doctors who choose to opt out on perhaps individually legitimate grounds. Still get the benefits of other people having opted in. That's not fair. And so I would make a case, strong case for opting in. When you do that, I think Vivian, it might also address your point about digital divides. That if this becomes a self national priority and national right. Then you use that rights based legal framework to have access to these technologies. But I'm not blind to the fact that digital technologies are inherently divided. And lead to huge potential abuses in privacy and human rights. Just if I might end on this note, I was in a discussion on digital currencies last week. Where, and Ibrahim, as a monetary economist, might appreciate this. The bigger concern with central bank digital currencies is surveillance. The word surveillance was used a dozen times and the word seniorage never came up once. So I, I think digital technologies have this tracking capability, which is in health good. But in other forms of our economic, political and social life, not so good. And I think balancing that is not a technological issue. It is a classic political governance issue that goes back thousands of years, actually.
Thank you for that. Would any of our discussions like to follow up on the issue of the healthcare and the digital divide and whether it might be exacerbated with the digitization of healthcare?
I don't really have much to add. I really, I, I think our perspective has been complete on, as Dr. Ronton first mentioned and you know, maybe going forward, we want to circle back to this, this topic periodically going forward to, to, to do some type of, of tracking on metrics of inequality in this space. And maybe that's the agenda to find a way to measure inequalities by country and start to track that in our databases.
That's definitely a good suggestion and probably would be a good strategy for monitoring and evaluating digitalization projects and agendas as well. Sada, would you like to add anything or should I move forward to a next question?
You can move forward on that. I think we covered it.
Okay. The next question comes from a selfish psychologist's perspective. Usually when we talk about health, we mostly cover, you know, physical health and we less so focus on mental health. Which is a very crucial element of human thriving and the welfare of societies in general. During the COVID-19 pandemic, a similar shift to digitization kind of took place in mental health services as well. In some countries more than others, of course. And recently, and this is why I asked this question, because this report came in, it came out in the, in the month of March. Gallup shared their 10th World Happiness Report. And a similar image to previous years emerged. The happiest countries were, you know, the wealthiest countries predominantly from the global north. The unhappiest countries were those predominantly from the global south, from over exploited nations, especially from the Arab region and the African continent. So my question to all of you, or just a question that I've been thinking about recently a lot as well, is how can we ensure that this digital transformation of mental health services specifically and mental health service provision attends to this intense disparity in well being across countries? So the core issue for me in this question is the idea of well being and how we can ensure that, you know, we get greater access to mental healthcare in regions that need it more than others.
Again, I'll, I'll just go first to flaunt my ignorance if you want, but, but you know, I, I'd say a couple of things that this, your, your mental health example is a good one. Where actually it's not the technology, but social norms that determine success or failure. And I say that in the context of my point about remote health. Is mental health treatment and services in most countries of the world, because of the stigma attached to mental health issues are difficult to find. Usually not covered by public insurance and so on. And they tend to be centered in a few urban centers. And so I can see how remote health and digital access allows people in other communities to deal with a mental health professional who's not from their community. Which is also often important when you go to smaller and smaller centers like towns and villages. So I think the anonymity and the access that digital gives you is an important plus point for mental health. I would balance that though with something which was not implicit in your question, but I would, I would raise, which is addiction is something that has become, I mean, addiction to digital devices has become a big mental health issue. Certainly in the U S and Canada and so on, this is now seen as a public health issue. There is some evidence controversial, but still that some of the many digital platforms and app designers have a disproportionate amount of behavioral psychologists on their staff. And you know, you have to ask why, if you're running a search engine, do you want to be a behavioral psychologist? And I think the charge that's made is that they help in building in addiction, especially for young people. And so there's a whole addiction issue which was not, I think, on in part of your question, which I would flag as the flip side to the access point.
Absolutely. I think that's, that's a great point that you raised and I personally, upon getting my PhD, was getting solicited to work at, you know, the big, the big tech firms as a social psychologist and we are their greatest base of potential employees. I can't even, so many people I know have left academia and joined the private sector specifically to work with tech companies to provide insight on things that you have mentioned. So it's definitely a, a rising trend among big tech firms. I think David had something to add as well.
To amplify on that, a very important point because as researchers, the, the public publicly shared research on this subject is small and the proprietary research is large. And I think we have an obligation as, as researchers and those, those of you who are tuning into this as a recording should really think about how we can support publicly shared research on social psychology from social trace data. When I say social trace data, what they know in Silicon Valley, they know the happiness index down at the, at, at the zip code level by looking at the words we use in our postings. They look for emotional words, they look for hate, they look for despair and, and, and they could probably predict suicide. Why should that happen in Silicon Valley? Why can't that happen for, for the, the public health agencies so we could target resources? It's, it's really a shame that so much of this research is done behind proprietary walls. We do need some support for using social trace data. Because what we often know about mental health as, as epidemiologists is, is pretty weak. The best data are suicide data. And if you wait for suicide, you're going to be behind things. We don't have the resources for survey based research. And even if you use survey based, survey based methods in mental health research, you have selection bias. So the frontier is finding a way for Silicon Valley to stop rating our best talent. And I'm so glad they didn't grab you. But how can we support research here in, in the academy?
I'd also add, by the way, that on, on this question of proprietary research on which David is absolutely right. That increasingly through whistleblowers and through legal, the channel. More and more of these proprietary documents are becoming public. That to me is very reminiscent of the fight against big tobacco where it was that way that the private research came to light and became publicized. And then those, that material was used in other parts of the world to drive legal cases and legislation. Now, one would hope that there's a more cooperative solution out there. My sense is there wouldn't be because there's just too many interests and big money involved. But I do think that we're now at the edge where a bit more, thanks to all of this collective action and adversarial action that we will see. And since you mentioned that I used to work at IDRC. You know, one of the more effective projects we had there years ago was translating all of the documents that the anti tobacco lawsuits in the U S had generated into Spanish for the tobacco movement in Latin America to use. So little things, not so little, but things like sort of making information accessible and then accessible. Little things, not so little, but things like of making information accessible and then accessible in local languages is a hugely empowering tool.
Absolutely. And uh speaking of data, Rownton, in your intervention, you mentioned this idea that we can potentially, you know. Um, if, if data from, from public healthcare um is sold or. Made available for private use that um generates some kind of, you know, um. Monetary outcome. Uh, you said that it could be possible, or we should ensure that stakeholders, as in the people who own this data. Uh, whose data belongs to them, it's data about them, get their benefits from commercializing the use of their data. Have you thought about, you know, the practicalities of that, how that would. Come about, or you know, how do we ensure that the people who are providing the data, their data is sold, but they're getting some of the benefits of their data being sold, let's say?
Look, I think there's two levels at which uh one can answer that question and it's self in some ways standard public finance. I, I'd say. If we simply had an effective tax system. So that the digital multinationals paid their proper share of taxes in each of the jurisdictions in which they operate. And then if you sort of believe in classic public choice theory, um, that. Revenue is recycled by the government to produce public goods, like that's the standard compact. Uh, and the fact is, uh, until recently, when uh the G twenty self put its weight behind a common tax regime and even. So there's lots of loopholes in it. We haven't had that. And so even if before we get to fancier items like. Uh, data trusts and so on, I would say if we could simply tax effectively. Especially in developing countries, by the way, the huge amounts of revenue that the digital platforms generate by operating there. That would be a step in the right direction. Now, the second side, uh, the second aspect is to create clubs in which you say, um, as with any uh firm. Uh, two million people get together and uh donate their data as it were to a certain trust. Now, if this data is used for some kind of social good. Um, then fine, there's no monetization and that's that. But if this data is monetized in some way, then this trust. Has wealth. And you are a trustee in it. So again, we have existing commercial law. That would allow you to do this. There's nothing novel in this, but it requires that initial impetus and some kind of encouragement to say. Okay, and this is where I say that a province or state might be a good example, could create this entity. Ask people initially to opt in and then see where it takes us. But the commercial value of jointed data is so large. And that wealth created is so uh impressive. That it makes sense to think of either taxation or shareholders or dividends as two ways to recycle it.
Lovely. These are excellent suggestions, I think. And I hadn't thought about, I really hadn't thought about that until you brought it up in your, in your presentation, honestly. So. It got my wheels turning and I think the suggestions are um both feasible, possible, but also require the cooperation of, of, you know. Um, governments uh at the governmental level. Um, and I think that leads me to my last, uh, last. Question, I guess. Uh, and then maybe we can take a couple more questions from, from the rest of the attendees. Because we're on the issue of governance and cooperation between governments uh on, you know. So the digital transformation that we're witnessing and that we've been discussing is one that has some global hints to it. So. There's a global nature to this kind of transformation that we're thinking about. Um, but one of the hurdles to achieving, um, you know, this global networked, uh, digitized healthcare system. Is that some governments may be slower to cooperate with other countries in creating this common resource, this common pool of data. So what are some recommendations that you can think about as economic health and development experts um? In order to ensure that governments are cooperative and that they're interested and invested in creating this globalized and. Integrated system of, of global healthcare, or at least global healthcare data?
That's uh, that's a tough one. And I think uh someone like David would be able to address. How do you go from the state level to the federal level in a federation? And then, you know. That's the analogy I'd use, but I think this is the big, um. I, I would say this is a good example where uh regional cooperation might be the way forward. Uh, I think countries uh such as in ASEAN, and there is a bit of movement there. If they uh create a health data pool. So that, for example, uh, patient records are uh transferable, or if they're in the cloud, that they're accessible. Uh, within a set number of countries, because those countries share. Common legislation, norms, technology and, and so cultural and other uh factors. Then that, I think, uh, would be a significant step forward. Then second, using the CERN example, I'd say suppose a group of countries came together. And created a grand challenge of some kind and then decided to collaborate in every way. Including on the data side. That is another way forward. So in the health field, I think. Regional groupings coupled with some kind of uh thematic or, or grand challenge orientation is probably the way forward. But the bigger question which, which I think you pose is, in my view, the big challenge to global governance today, which is. We have a balkanized world in which uh China has a state-centric data zone. Uh, its mirror image is the U.S., where it's a firm-centric data zone. And in both those cases, the citizen is just about equally disempowered, by the way. And then you've got the Europe, European GDPR system. And then you have these emergent, the Indian stacks and so on. And these data zones are sufficiently different that they cannot talk to each other. They do not. There's no such thing. As a global firm anymore for that reason is it's operating in these different environments in which there are radically different approaches to data. And the benefits of cooperation, I mean, this is the wrong time. In history to talk about that because we're seeing so precious little of it. But the benefits of cooperation here do exceed the costs. And so. The optimist in me says that if the U.S., China and the European Union actually sat down and thought this one through. It would be a long process. It would be a long Bretton Woods uh type process. I think we would get somewhere that's a better spot than the one we're in. And the one we're headed. And so, you know, my final. And this is maybe completely off topic, but uh when you see the nature of the sanctions that have been imposed on Russia. One reason they're so powerful is because they're now digital. I mean, the, the Swift payment system. Is a massively powerful hammer to use. Uh, it sweeps in absolutely everyone, you know, the good Russians and the bad Russians. Uh, and anyone else you care to uh draw in. And so digital is an incredibly powerful tool for sanctioning. But if you flip that over and think of what that means for cooperative solutions, that's also very enticing.
Thank you for that insightful answer. And I agree, the first, when you first mentioned Russia, immediately I thought Swift and how Swift was used and. How many tens of millions of people it impacted in just, you know, one decision that is completely digital in nature. Um, anything else that either David or Sarah would like to add?
No, I, I, I think the, the, there is this value of cooperation and. You don't always need a quid pro quo to get people to do the right thing on, by, by, by sharing their data. Uh, here in this federal system that we work on, we, we, we do have reporting of COVID cases that, that everybody cooperates with, but we don't have. Uh, common cooperation in detailed data on vaccine receipt. We get aggregates, but we don't have the breakdown. So for instance. In my county, it looked like the people on the northern border were getting fewer vaccines and we suspected that they were going into Pennsylvania to get vaccinated. Pennsylvania would not share county level data about the people on the border and they still won't. The quid pro quo didn't work. And going forward, there needs to be, perhaps the federal government could say your grants depend on you. Sharing your, your data for vaccine coverage. Um, there's a little bit of pride of, look, it's our right, it's our space, we don't have to cooperate with you. Don't push us around. And that certainly happens more mag- magnified with a national sense of sovereignty and you can't make us do this. Uh, I, I'm not optimistic. It's not going to be easy to get people to do the right thing.
Uh, I, I would also like to add that the international health regulation could be also a platform where people can start with in terms of building this kind of. Let's say partnership in building the pool data, um. Uh, units, let's say. Um, and also, um, it's important to always uh put in mind the. The domestic funding and the domestic allocation uh where it should be also directed at local level. Um, and should be mobilized as well. And also at the country level, um, there should be. Um, an advocacy on the benefits that can come from that. That's also an area where. Um, a rigorous um work should be done.
Sarah makes a good point. In fact, you know, people focus on the vaccine distribution parts of COVAX. But COVAX has many parts to it, uh, one of which is cooperation. In research innovation and in fact data. And, you know, if, I, I don't know the mechanics of that. Uh, but it seems to me that that also is, is an example. To answer your question, Vivian, which is supposed to WHO took a leading role. In, in specifying some aspect of virus research where there would be a global database. Uh, then one can see how uh that kind of example leads to others happening as well.
Uh, Rahim, maybe any final comments or questions?
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, I'm actually wanted to say that, uh, you know, the, the, one of the slides that, uh. That Rohinton uh described, and it has the political economy aspect. Uh, I think this is very critical and I just wanted to draw from the experience of Sudan where, where both, uh, when both Sarah and I. Uh, we're drawn into the government, the transitional government, uh, after the revolution in Sudan. Uh, as a finance minister, I was, I was concerned primarily with the cash transfers. And the cash transfers was, uh. It, it was, it was a national narrative that we tried to promote, which is that. We are going to reform the commodity subsidy system. Uh, but we are not going to lift the subsidies. We are going to. Uh, actually transit from subsidizing commodities. To directly empowering Sudanese people through the, the cash transfers. And the, the tool is the, is the digital, uh, you know, platforms. Through the, uh, the, the, the mobile phones. Uh, and using the, the national identity system as an identification system. Uh, to, to identify and, and, and assess eligibility and what have you. And with this, or at least the line that uh I took in the media is that this is a new social contract. That we are building a new social contract, uh, especially with the. Uh, Sudanese people in the marginalized and conflict-affected regions. And. Now reflecting back on this and in light of this conversation, in that we could actually bundle all this. Uh, you know, kind of national objectives, most, most notably the health service delivery. Uh, and we tried actually to do this, the health service delivery, uh, the cash transfers. Uh, and even the educational service delivery with uh this digital transformation program. Uh, and so perhaps maybe this could be uh highlighted. Maybe in future research as to, for example, this is a successful uh digital kind of uh programs. Like in places like India and, and even uh close to home in Jordan, for example. Uh, and I know in Mexico is one of the early programs and in Chile. It would be very interesting to actually explore these experiences. And the extent to which actually a very kind of consistent and, and, and robust national narrative. Uh, linking uh this digital transformation uh initiatives with. Something tent amount of a social, social contract, you know, I think it might actually be very important to ensure that. You avoid, you get the benefit of the digital transformation and then avoid the, the perils of digital divides, you know. So just a thought.
I fully agree with that. And I had written in the chat box that a similar plan to the one that you just discussed. Uh, is currently being implemented in Lebanon in terms of, uh, it's like, uh, uh, it's a digitized platform for people who would need. The governmental support after all the subsidies have been lifted. And we are having uh extreme trouble with having people access. Sign up to that to receive the cash funds from the government. Uh, being specifically because of the inaccessibility to, to the internet or to connectivity or to even knowledge about the fact that this is happening and this is being implemented. So I think that uh being able to uh draw on successful experiences where such, uh, where such uh platforms have been put forth. And have reached a wide user base, especially within marginalized communities, is definitely something that. We need to be doing research on. We need some lessons learned to be, to be able to implement these strategies in our own countries. Um, both at the health level, but also at other social security related uh outcomes as well. Uh, it's uh, uh, seven P M Cairo time now, so I think uh it's time for us to close. Our very exciting and very insightful session. I want to thank all of our speakers for really just, uh. Echoing some really important ideas and bringing to the forefront some questions and challenges that we need to think about when considering. Uh, the digital transformations in healthcare that we discussed today. Uh, thank you all so very much for your time and for your energy. This was a really exciting session for me to moderate personally. So I'm very grateful for all of you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. You have been really a great moderator and leader. Thank you so much. And thank you, Rohinton, Sarah and David.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It was a pleasure to meet you all. Have a lovely evening.